I've pronounced your name correctly.
Correct.
Who is from the DEP and he was here on March 11th to help us understand more deeply the revisions to shoreline zoning that the DEP has proposed and also as they relate to the updating of our own shoreline zoning ordinance. And we got stuck on a couple of questions that we really felt we needed the answers to in order to proceed with our shoreline zoning maps, which have to be adopted by law with because of federal legislation with flood hazard insurance, flood hazard maps. And so this is a follow-up and we have Judy Colby George with us who is doing our GIS mapping for us. And it's really behooves us to have both of them communicating because some of Judy's questions really the planning board and the planner couldn't answer, but the DEP can. So we're hoping that this whole meeting with all of us together will clear things up. So I'm calling this meeting to order. That's the agenda. We aren't going to take a vote. We don't have a form, but we're not going to take a vote. So I'd like to, starting with Judy, have folks introduce themselves.
Judy Colby George from Viewers.
Ed Simmons.
Oh my gosh.
Ed Simmons.
And I just kind of felt like the product that we came out with met their standards, but it didn't totally make sense. It was hard for the homeowners to understand. I think it would have been easy for the codes office to interpret because it just, you know, this is the standard, this is what it shows on the map. But I just feel like we kind of missed the mark a little bit and I am really interested in figuring out what are, what we're asking for to figure out what our next step is. And I asked Judy to pull up Pole Island because I feel like it's a great example. But Judy has no idea where Pole Island is.
I did.
Will you go?
I did have a few things before we.
Oh yes, I'm so sorry Jeff.
Oh, no problem, no problem at all. I didn't really have this all to myself until now.
Before you start, I just want to, I just want to add to what Margaret said, which is that, and it was something that you said at the March 11th meeting, which is that while these maps aren't legal maps, but they are actually used to define the boundaries of the zone. So it's, they kind of have their foot in both camps, which is why the homeowner who looks at the maps was so concerned about what, how their property was designated.
Well, they are legal maps. If I said they weren't, I really misspoke.
Okay.
I mean, they're, once you adopt them, once the zone's shown, that's a legal requirement.
But the absolute boundary is not necessary.
The absolute boundary can be measured. The map shows that the zone exists, but then you go find whatever the hat is on that property and measure it.
Okay.
So it's open to interpretations and things like that, boundary lines, but I mean, it is a legal document.
Okay, thank you.
For sure. So, sorry if I misspoke.
No, I didn't.
So the FEMA maps have driven a lot of municipalities to look at the resource protection district and remapping. Margaret kind of had the lead, had the head there early on and I gave her the existing policy that we had and we kind of turned through it. It was pretty eye-opening for me last time I was here to see the struggle. Not only board members, but community members had some questions. So other, there's four of us in the state, four shoreline zoning coordinators, others have been running into this. So we actually all kind of got together and really come up hopefully with a more simplified understanding of it. I mean, the old one I struggled with, it was like almost a negative and I don't know, it just, it didn't make sense. Basically what we're looking at now for looking at maps is as if there are two structures within 500 feet of shore frontage, it's going to be currently developed or dropping the hole as long as it's maintained in 1,000 feet. And that was always a little bit confusing. So hopefully that's a simpler way to look at things. We're willing to look at it in all zones, not just the wildlife, which is where it was developed, but also the hundred-year floodplain, also in contiguous, the two main areas, just contiguous slopes. So I think that would simplify how this is being looked at. I mean, basically you're looking at measuring between dwellings, are they within 500 feet? And just going along the shoreline, looking at the shore frontage. I mean, some areas just fall right out, you know, there are going to be RP, there's nothing there. And then other areas, you know, that's, there's just, they're lined right up. So, and it would be the whole property, once two dwellings are within 500 feet, those lot, the RP is drawn on lot lines, you know, that's, that lot is out, those two lots are out or whatever, how many lots are out. It's just we're using dwellings to identify the, you know, the criteria of currently developed.
You said structures. Do you mean principles, principal structures?
Dwellings, yeah, dwellings. A boathouse just sitting there, we wouldn't count.
Right.
So if you, if you look at the Pole Island example.
Yeah, let's go. I just wanted to make sure that we kind of were all working on the.
Wait, I have one more question before we get to Pole Island. You said that the word developed was meant for the inland fishery, the wading bird habitat?
That's where it first started.
But even though it's like at the beginning of RP, so it would, you would think that it applies to every category.
It does apply to every category. Where we're seeing it, where it was mostly of concern, I don't know if you were involved in this stuff in 2007 when all the IWWH came out, there was a lot of, and the Department of State said you had to put this in RP. You don't have to anymore, but that was a big ask. And so they were looking for criteria that you wouldn't have to because some of these areas, people live there. And again, that's the same problem. And I, so I mean, it's, it applies to all of them. Where I'm seeing it now, I mean, that's, the IWWH has kind of all settled out and communities have it or they don't because you don't have to have it anymore. So what's really brought it to our attention this time is the FEMA maps because it's having, you know, widespread change on RP. I mean, the continuous slopes, contiguous slopes hasn't really changed much, but we're throwing that in there as well while municipalities are remapping, you can take a look at this as well. But it applies to everything. And if there's something other than what I've brought up FEMA or slopes, talk about that too.
Is this going forward as far as adding new dwellings that are part of that?
If you're remapping your RP, you can look at current and past mapping, though it's all up for grabs. I think Harpswell didn't have their RP accurately mapped, so it's kind of like we're beginning.
Starting over, so if.
But if there was an RP and we're remapping, we can look at the whole thing. You don't have to apply the, what we've come up with as a definition for currently developed. That would be more restrictive. Municipalities can be more restrictive.
Right, but we'd have to justify it to the people who we tell we can't build a house there. That's the problem.
I'm not saying you should be more restrictive. I totally understand.
I understand that.
And that was a question that was asked and yes, you can be more restrictive and I'm very familiar with hurdles to being more restrictive.
Okay, I understand. And I'm not being critical. I, if you look at Pole Island, that iteration is different than the iteration that we had on, when we started this project, we had no RP on Pole Island.
Okay, so why is the RP there now?
I don't know.
There's two reasons there's RP on Pole Island. The first, the south end is because it's in the flood zone and the west side is because it's got sustained slopes of 20% or more. But because the other end of the, other side of the island has houses, it's not RP, even though it is still seep or even though it might still be in the flood zone.
Okay.
So it just, it ends up people feeling like they're, you know, they're being singled out because these properties are not developed, those ones are, so they don't get.
Which, which, now did the, I can't see the lot lines, like I see towards the top, it looks like the island's split in half, but then.
These go all the way across.
So they just go all the way across?
Yeah.
And so.
Right, but take a look at the south side.
Okay.
Now, there are three houses on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
They are probably within 500 feet of each other.
Mm-hmm.
And that guy, it's a single lot.
Mm-hmm.
I want to build a fourth house and why can't I build a fourth house when there's already three within 500 feet, which exceeds the density on my property? Now, I understand, it really depends on how you define an area in your definition of built up.
Developed.
Developed. If you say the area is any area you pick and not a lot line and not a lot, it does, that whole area extends more than 1,000 feet, but the, but the south side looks pretty built up with three houses already.
I mean, wouldn't density here.
The one that's in the green is a house.
Well, it's still within 500 feet, so anywhere along that curve at the bottom is within 500 feet, let's say, let's assume, of the two that are houses.
You're, you're looking at the frontage. I mean, this is like the perfect, like a difficult example where you're on a peninsula and the frontage basically, I mean, you have to, on this one, I would interpret that as instead of using shore frontage, kind of just go along the outside and look at the frontage there and what's developing. You also get into the density, is a fourth house even allowed on that lot? How does RP change anything?
Well, let's say they subdivided that into two lots, which they can do without getting approval.
Well, they would need to meet shoreline zoning requirements. I don't know, you know, what the lot size is, what the shore frontage is. There's a lot of things that go, I mean, they do need to not create a lot that isn't in compliance with the law. They can't make a new non-conforming lot. It gets complicated if you've got three structures on it because now you're like, when were the structures built? Were they predating shoreline zoning? If so, there's rules of construction for trying to break that lot apart. You try and make each lot more non-conforming or more conforming, most conforming possible. I mean, this is a really tough example of, you know, I want to break off another lot. There's a lot more than just whether or not we're calling this RP or limited residential. Even if you call it limited residential, there's still a lot of questions.
Limited residential is our shoreline residential.
Right. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Thank you.
And that's what it was before. The whole island was shoreline residential. You know, and I think we're sort of singling out some of the shoreline residential zones and throwing them in RP when in reality, the majority of our shorefront is in the CF zone, which doesn't have that as an issue. And you look at the map, it's all pink.
Like if Judy was to zoom out, a lot, oh, not that far. Because you'll see a lot around Pole Island there is all pink, which is commercial fishing.
And so when we go to the voters and we all of a sudden have, how many properties at the last count, 500 properties?
I really can't remember.
That are new to RP, we're going to have a, we're going to have a lot of unhappy people and they're going to want to know.
That's going to happen, that's got to happen. I mean, the Harps, the town of Harpswell had incorrectly mapped RP. This is part of the pain, growing pain of actually catching up. If you had the proper RP to begin with, there wouldn't be 500 people all of a sudden. I'm sorry to, you know, kind of be that guy, you know, but that's kind of the way it is. I mean, you weren't in compliance to begin with, so yes, this is going to be a big step, but it's required by law.
And I understand that.
And the currently developed is a break. It's like, okay, you're out. You know, and I understand that, you know, people aren't going to be happy, but that's, that's the law. And, you know, there's good reason to not have people developing these areas as a town, as a municipality, big picture wise.
So another way to look at it is applying the rules that have existed all along, have been many, many times.
Well, but that's, that's what I wanted to, that's.
Now, now we're applying to the folks that should have been prior years ago.
We said that, but nobody was satisfied with that answer.
But let me just make the point that I wanted to make was the definition of built up that you have provided, that the DEP has said is the one we should use, the 500 and 100, is not codified anymore. Nope. That's my problem, is that you guys are coming up with a rule, not you particularly, but the DEP is saying you should use this rule. It's very difficult to understand what the area is that you're talking when you look at each area. My concern is twofold. One, that we're going to get challenges and it isn't just going to be a bunch of angry people, it's going to be people that have the wherewithal to contest that. And we have to stand up for it and that costs the town money. And I would hesitate to recommend to the select board that they, you know, do something that's going to cost them a lot of dough because they can't support it. And when you take away someone's right to build a house on their land, you darned about, well, better be right. I mean, that's all I'm asking for, is how do we define this so that people can understand it, the 500 and the 100 test?
I did lay out a different test, but I want to go right back to something you just said. We're not taking their land.
No.
We're changing, if it was LR and now it's RP, there's nothing on it, they can still build on it. There's different restrictions.
Yeah, but there's a limit.
If you have, do you have a special exception in your, for the RP?
What, the 1,500 square feet?
Yeah, it's 1,500 square feet, which doesn't help a lot of people when they're building mega mansions.
But isn't it also, if this is my lot, half of it's in RP and half of it's not?
Kind of like the south, the south lot on Pole Island.
For you guys to grant the 1,500.
Look at how far the RP zone comes in though.
That's, that's my.
It's not 75 feet. That's not 75 feet. This is a big island.
Yeah.
And I'll show you the same thing at the tip of Dixon Point in Lowell Cove.
So this is, this is, how, what's the depth on that? What is, what is the depth from approximately? What are we talking?
This is about 190.
Okay, so we're, it's all within the shoreline zone.
That's where the floodplain goes.
Yeah, no, it's, but it's all within, we're not talking 500 feet.
Somebody wants to sue to build in the floodplain.
Yeah.
Well, that would have different issues. That's right.
But that's what the, I guess, that's what the RP is. It's the floodplain or it's a 20% slope.
Exactly. I think Howard's right and Jeff is right too. The way that we explain this is going to be really critical and I think it's going to take some serious background work to educate landowners about why this is happening because they're going to see it as a military change for them. But there are reasons, as Jeff said, that are not only protect the property owner, but protect the water quality for the marine environment. And so really we have to be able to explain that. The other thing that Howard said, which I, I am fully in agreement with, is if I can't explain why this is, why these changes are happening as a planning board person, then I'm, I'm going to be loathe to go up in front of town meeting and ask folks to support it. And right now, I don't feel like I can explain it very well.
That's really what happened last time too.
And the change in our definition isn't going to make that simpler?
I think, I think it is definitely simpler.
I don't know how many it'll take out, how many more houses you'll be able to take out, but it seems, you know, more understandable and maybe you need time to think about or.
So here's a question. Could we satisfy your rules, like say, instead of putting the 20% slope in resource protection, could we just write in our ordinance that you can't build on slopes that are 20%? So we can avoid zoning it RP and just make an ordinance change?
Are you talking about RP a slope throughout the whole 250 or are you talking about a slope that's, you know, 100 feet? I mean, I mean, where it comes down, what a lot of the, what I've seen on slopes, like what a lot comes down to is they're not able to do the point system out front. They want a clear for the view, for the openness, to get air flowing, for whatever reasons they want to clear for. It really doesn't, you know, I mean, unless it's for the whole 250 and then it can limit the size of what they're building. And, you know, it limits the cleared openings in that, which can be beneficial because if you've got a great, big, huge cleared openings, you've got a lot of stormwater going down a steep slope, which usually isn't a good, good combination. So, I mean, I don't know, you could do that across the board. I mean, what was that again?
I just, people don't want their house, their property's own resource protection. But if you say, Sam Alexander is a perfect example, you say, Sam says, I don't want that to be resource protection. And you say, well, do you want to build on your 20% slope? Well, no, I'm never going to build on it. So my thought was like, maybe there's a different way that we could regulate it without people feeling like their rights are being taken from them. Because they don't want to build on the steep slopes, but they also don't want to be zoned resource protection.
That's not really transparent though.
No.
And you are mistransparency, so.
No, it's not transparent. I just thought maybe it was a viable solution.
And it doesn't, isn't the map a legal document?
Yeah.
The map has to match what is true in the written document.
Yeah.
Yes, there is, no.
No. I understand Jeff's point about, about clearing trees because there's very limited tree clearing that you can do in the RP zone.
I almost feel from a public policy standpoint, that we are going to have to bite the bullet on this. It's going to be, it's going to be a whole education program that we're going to have to think through. It's going to require mailing to everybody, a really good explanation in the mailing, good online website documentation, and then a series of public hearings, probably not public, but workshops or meetings on a neighborhood level.
Totally.
And I think we need to start planning that out.
Mm-hmm. But Jeff, you have this new rule written down, correct? The one that you were.
Yeah.
Do we have that?
Probably not. I didn't really email anything out prior to this meeting.
Okay. It would be great to have that and also have a bunch of examples. If, for example, you have this and this, then it's this. If your situation is this, to give people, sometimes the ordinance or the rule by itself seems very complex to understand.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm thinking about real life examples and I think we will have to have that if we do it. I need it myself.
Yeah, well, I think ideally you would, you would ask questions about something in Harpswell.
Right.
Is what, you know, happens in Phippsburg, happens in Phippsburg. I mean, what are your, what's going on in Harpswell? I mean, where is the board, you know, getting stocked? Where are people asking a lot of questions and things like that? See, I talked with Margaret, mostly emailed with Margaret, you guys worked on things and then came up with a map and had a very hard time with it. And I was, I kind of missed all that in the middle and I'd like to be involved in the middle. As, as we work through this, we develop examples in Harpswell for your planning board. I mean, this is why, this is why we did this on that lot. I mean, I need more time with the peninsula one, Dow Island. There's a lot there. And RP might not change a thing. What they can actually do with that lot, except maybe some clearing. I mean, I don't know, they got three on there now, but.
They didn't.
Okay, well, that's perfect. Yeah, so great. So they're grandfathered and, you know, he might be able to do some splits, but splitting out an undeveloped lot might be, might be tough whether there's RP or not.
I have property on Pole Island.
Oh.
President of the homeowners association.
Ah, cool.
Oh, so you know a lot about it.
So, yeah, I know a lot about it.
Yeah.
Southern tip, a lot of that is flood area. That's, that's more understandable regardless of how the rules.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
That makes it... Right up here. There's a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot here.
It's a big lot, okay.
They're both...
That's the steep slopes on the island.
Okay.
So there's a big question.
It looked like there was steep slopes on the other side.
500 feet apart.
Yeah, I mean, can you put the slope data back up again? So the red is 20%?
Yep.
Now, how did you determine it was contiguous or not? Because the whole right side seems like it's more than, than two acres.
Oh, it was, this is only the contiguous. The red is just the contiguous, anything that's contiguous, 20-acre slopes.
Okay, so then when you mapped it, why isn't it on both sides of the island? Because that side should be green, then.
Because the houses are there, so it got, it just got taken out for a limited residential.
All right, and so that sharp line is the lot line?
It's not the lot line. It got cut here because we weren't using that same calculation. We were just trying to estimate, you know, 500 feet apart for houses, and, you know, where there was continuous houses, and then there was no houses anymore on this side. So, we cut it past that house. That was, that was the logic I used.
Right.
It can change, it could go down to that lot line. I mean, we didn't have a, you know, we were trying our best to, you know, to use, to keep the slopes where there was no further housing for some length of time, you know, some length of distance of shoreline that was more than 500. So anywhere there was more than 500 feet of shoreline with no house, and not another house, like, right on the other edge of it, we kept the RP in.
Can you explain that?
It doesn't? Okay.
500, 500 feet from that house.
No, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't buffering the house by 500 feet. I was looking for another house within 500.
There's no other house than 500 feet.
Then we moved the RP to a reasonable distance from the house. There's no other...
It should have been the lot line, I might not have been clear on that.
Yep.
So if that's the line, it should be adjusted to wherever the lot line is, because if that parcel's within 500, or that dwelling's within 500 feet of another dwelling, we, we just the whole parcel, you can't map. It's, it's set up by parcels, roads, other major divisions, so that is probably information I didn't, didn't provide. But that would explain why there's a straight line and not, yeah, most of that island's not getting RP. It seems like most of the lots on there already have a dwelling, so I don't know they could get a second. Anyways, I'm not really sure, from a practical standpoint...
Where is the lot line?
What, what it means?
Right, where it just cursor us?
Right there.
Each lot is a little over five acres.
So why didn't the RP go to the lot line? The answer was...
I probably didn't explain it well. I mean, this is the first time Judy and I have, have Matt talked about this project. Again, I...
Because in the middle, we were trying to craft a rule that it would, the area would start at a lot, and end at a lot line. And we were told we couldn't do that by our attorney.
The attorney did not, did not agree with that idea, no. So the next lot down, if we go by your...
Then how do you, how do you determine where you draw the line?
I don't know.
Exactly.
So the next lot down, where it says Pol Island on there, there is a house, but on the other side of the island, there's RP. Are you saying that if there's one principal structure on the lot, none of the lot goes into RP? Is that what you're saying?
So, in the interesting, in, in the interesting experience of Harpswell, where you have ridges and, you know, two sides of something, and a house on one side of that...
Yeah.
And then the other side, if you do the whole lot, then the other side wouldn't go into RP?
Which other side?
Just this, you know, so, if this, if this whole lot can't have any RP on it, even though there's a house on this side, then that leaves open this to be divided, and someone to be able to put a house on this side, and there'd be no RP on that side.
Well, what's, what's the five lot restriction? Is that like an association restriction? Is it a municipal restriction? I mean, how many dwellings are allowed on a five acre?
It was subdivided.
Yeah, if you could email me that. This is, this is a good, this is a good, a good one. I mean, we, we, normally, I'm dealing with, well, not normally, but frequently, we're, we're looking at small lots, might not even, like, have dimensional requirements, they're just grandfathered. This is a somewhat unique situation with an island and large lots that, you know, may be able to be subdivided, and a house put on the other shore, if, you know, maybe even two, depending on, on the dimensions.
I feel like if we could explain this, we could explain anything.
All right, yeah, if you can send me that.
Well, I don't think this is unusual in Harpswell for the islands.
No.
Well, no, that's a good example, yeah, yeah.
We just have a ton of steep slopes, too. You know, Judy took out all the developed steep slopes, because it was going to put thousands of people or something crazy like that into RP.
But there's also still a lot of large lots, I mean, this one is a bad example, but, you know, here's a lot where there's a development, you know, there's some buildings here, but then if this whole lot goes out of RP, then all the rest of that shoreline that has nothing on it goes out of RP.
I mean, that begs the question for me, what is the purpose of what the DEP, what is the goal of DEP? To meet with this line? What's it trying to do?
Not have development on, in floodplains or steep slopes, which, you know, can be very detrimental to water quality.
So I get that, I, that's what I figure, but it sounds like what, what Judy just said is actually not meeting that goal.
Now, where your lots are that large, I mean, you know, my, my, you know, my first kind of reaction is, is that we might have to limit that. You're right, because you, because aside, and you could have, let's say, 10 lots on there.
Yeah.
And it was all removed, so maybe we have to, and we say, lots will have to, we'll have to, I think we're going to have to just, yeah, refine that. Because I'm, I'm not usually dealing with lots that big.
And we don't have a ton of lots that big, either.
Well, it still needs to be resolved. This is, this is what we need to resolve for when you're at the meeting.
Look at the map.
Yeah, that one on Birch Island, I think, is protected.
White Island, I mean, there's a, there's a fair, I mean, just having looked at every single parcel, parcel many, many times over, there's more than its fair share than there are in men, in a lot of the other towns that I've done shoreline zoning in.
Yeah, well, when, when Margaret asked...
It's way more complicated than any other town I've done.
What's the lady that owns the rest?
When you asked for an example, I just did a real simple one, it's like, there's a bunch of houses here, and then there was a bunch of houses there.
So I have two...
Helen Norton.
Helen Norton.
Yeah.
Those are huge lots, in, on the neck.
So really, the question is, is what, what happens when there, the lot is large and can be subdivided? Is that kind of the fundamental question?
I think that's, I don't think that's a fundamental question, but I think that's one question. I do have a question, though, Jeff. Were these resource protection rules originally developed for freshwater wetlands? Because I feel like they don't really capture the issues that we have for coastal wetlands, like the steep slopes, the floodplains. I just feel like it's, it's really hard to apply them to the town of Harpswell.
I couldn't say why, how they were developed. I mean, that's all 70s and 80s.
But you don't know that they were originally for, like, ponds and lakes and rivers? That's how it feels a little bit.
When I look back at the old Chapter 1,000s into the 70s and 80s, it's, it's pretty much freshwater and coastal.
Oh.
They were looking at both at, at the time. And whether or not it, it works or makes sense is more of a legislative question...
Yeah.
Than it is, kind of like a, there's only so much I can do, and I'm doing it now to try and make it work as best possible. And apparently, there's been resistance for this for, for quite some time. And, you know, that, there, you know, why doesn't it work? Why doesn't this work for Harpswell? Why does, I mean, RP, not, just forget about our discussion of, of, you know, currently developed, why, why didn't it work?
I just feel like, because we're coming up with a bunch of little tiny slivers of land, especially with the steep slopes, like, look at all those little slivers that are now in RP, and that is really hard for homeowners to understand, and for us to try to explain to them.
So what are we talking, those are, like, those little slivers are two acres of contiguous slopes of 20%?
That are within the shoreline zone.
And they're not developed, and, I mean, and they, they seem to be not very deep, 100 feet deep, 200 feet deep. It's hard for me to gauge the, the depth of some of those slivers.
How wide they are?
How wide they are, yeah, if you'd measure from...
Five, 85 feet.
Seems odd to me that you have, usually I see it on the shore, and then it, I don't...
This is what the, this is what the...
What's the middle one?
There's a ridge here.
Ridge.
But it's not, you know, the, it's not 20% up, once it gets up here, but it's there and there.
Yeah.
That's where they wanted to put the, put a, attainable house.
This is, so I used the LiDAR data, I used the LiDAR data.
No.
And I made it into three-foot pixels, and then calculated the slope for each pixel, and then...
So a lot of them, are you seeing less than 75 feet, these, I mean...
The width?
Yeah, the width...
Yeah.
Of what, the remnant, once you've subtracted everything based on currently developed, and you're leaving little slivers, you call them, what are, you know, what are these slivers? What are the, the depth of the slivers from the water? Are they, like, on a single lot? Are they...
Well, this, I mean, this one, it goes across, but the, that's just because the shoreline zoning, you know, the coast goes out.
Yeah.
The, the actual, actual 20% slope continues along this ridge.
But they're outside the shoreline zone.
Yeah, you know, and this little piece here comes along this side of the ridge, the only piece that shows up in shoreline.
Mm-hmm.
There's not, there aren't tons of them. I mean, it does look a little weird, like, on these sides.
Let's go back to where, where you were.
Yep.
And some of those ones right on the coast.
Yep.
What, what are we looking at there for, like, dimension-wise? Like, how many feet of shore frontage, what's their, you know, kind of depth?
So, from the parcel line, 32 feet.
They're 32 feet deep?
We're just, there's a lot of steep slope on our coastline, and there just is, and...
Yep. That slope follows along.
So they're not 75, basically? There's, most of that is less than 75?
And that's true, I would say, a goodly chunk of...
So a lot of that area is, oops, sorry.
It's restricted.
And you have à la, à la cutting restrictions would apply, right, the point system and everything? That might be something we can...
What came up that I remember at the meeting was one woman who stood up and said, "There's a row of lots. This one has a house, this one has a house, this one has a house, mine doesn't have a house, and now you're telling me I can't build on it." And that's the kind of thing we need to be able to explain.
Oh, you know, where's the...
Understand if it's law, we get that, but people are still going to be unhappy and need to understand. We can understand.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's tough. That's, that's zoning, that's, you know, like, as times change, you know, the zone changes, things change, and what you could have, just the other week before the law went into fact, you, you can't have, the person next door can't have that.
Right.
I mean, that's, kind of comes along with the deal, yeah. They're, they're grandfathered, that, that's kind of grandfathering, and that, that can be a, a tough thing to swallow, but we're not taking this lot, this one lot that's left, it just has more restrictions. We're allowing them to build on it. It might not be the, the big place they had dreamed about their whole life when they retired, but that's just how the law works. I mean, I can't change that.
To Courtney's point, it seems like we're being asked to meet a deadline, we being the town, a deadline that has been imposed at several layers of government, but we don't have an adequate understanding of how the rules apply in Harpswell. And we don't even really have an adequate understanding of how they should apply in Harpswell. And I, I find that very disconcerting, because we, we just cannot risk, I don't think, undermining public support for this, public understanding for this. We will undermine our credibility as a local government and as a planning board if we can't really explain this, justify it, and back it up. And I, I'm not, I'm, I feel like we're caught in a vice, because we, we have a deadline that we're supposed to meet without adequate understanding, and that is, I'm not prepared as planning board to, as a, as a chair, to recommend to the board that we move forward on this, because we just destroy our credibility.
Yeah, well, we're working on that now. I mean, there's some things, like this last question we had, there's the last lot standing or remaining undeveloped, has all these restrictions nobody else had. I mean, that's, doesn't matter what kind of zoning you're talking about, I mean, you could change something.
I had as an example.
I'm trying to remember. I don't remember where this woman was from, I just remember her standing up, and she was very frustrated, understandably so.
She might have been from... That is a great... A soul. They just have a similar example now there, because...
Well, what are you going to do when they come to you? Are you going to tell them they have, they can only build a 1,500, 1,500 square foot house?
Technically, well, but also there's restrictions about...
That, there are. The flood, the flood ordinance has restrictions on what you can and can't build.
And, and, you know, just from a practical standpoint, there's a reason that that's the last undeveloped lot. The reason is that it's not, it's not a, as marketable as the other lots.
That's what we're seeing a lot of, is a lot of land that nobody would have ever thought of developing before is being developed.
Judy, will you put the flood zone out there?
It doesn't matter. You want, gotta have it all.
I know, exactly.
Exactly.
But all the other houses are in the flood zone, too, I assume.
No.
No, just a low spot.
I mean, just because it, it's a lot on a, on a map, doesn't mean that all land is not created equal. And that's a really hard concept for folks that own a piece of property that want to do something on it, especially if they could have a day ago, but now we're being told they can't.
Yeah.
It, it just puts us in a really awkward position.
But there's, there's two different types on the, on the screen.
As of today, that's not in resource protection.
By definition, it is.
It is, it is.
It's just not mapped.
It hasn't been mapped.
If it's not mapped, it's not showing on the map.
I mean, by, but by definition, or definition...
It has to be shown on the map. Pretty sure your ordinance is going to say, "As shown on..."
It's not, it's not.
"As shown on the map."
If she pulls a permit before we do this change, she wins.
Exactly.
Yeah?
And you have to give her the, you have to give her the permit.
See, I thought that if, if it said resource protection by definition, it was in it, because we have the definition, we, you know, our ordinance says what's in resource protection, so we go...
I think you're referring to the section that says, "It, it's not exact, and you can, if it's not on the map, where is that section?"
It does say that, that the flood zone is not mapped.
Interpretation of district boundaries, but that one is, the depiction of the RP district and all shoreline districts on the maps is illustrative of their general location. "The boundaries shall be determined but by measurement from maximum high water line." Yeah, so you could make the argument that...
You could.
Even if it doesn't show on the map, you have to do that, but...
But also...
Not shoreline zoning, it's section eleven point one, official shoreline zoning map, the areas to which this ordinance is applicable are hereby divided into the following districts as shown on the official shoreline zoning map, which are made part of this ordinance. So if it's not on the map.
Except, except the flood zone.
Why is it mapped as no, it's mapped as LR?
But then we have an.
Or limited shoreline.
But it does say, uh, "The most recent version of the flood insurance rate map prepared by FEMA is considered to be part of the official showing, shoreline zoning map for the purpose of identifying the resource protection district adjacent to tidal waters." So there is.
Got me there, that's, that's, it's a Harpswellism.
Yeah, and then on the next page, section thirteen point one, number two, it does say, uh, for the flood zone, whether or not these areas are depicted on the official shoreline zoning map. So at least for the flood zone, it's in RP regardless of whether or not it's actually mapped. The rest of them are.
I think that, I think.
Just the flood zone.
Yeah, I think you're gonna, you could be challenged on that. Because I mean, the department's interpretation has been strictly on the map, but.
It's remarkable to me that nobody's ever come to the Board of Appeals in the last five years.
Really?
With an argument about where the boundary is, that's one of our duties.
That's correct, that's correct.
We haven't updated it since twenty thirteen.
You know.
I, I think there's a legal case here, I, and, you know, Margaret may very well win it, I mean, I can see your point, I mean, but I don't know, I mean, we're talking court, so.
Well, they have to go to appeals court first.
So Jeff, have, have other people come up with, I know that we're not supposed to compare ourselves to other towns and what they're going through, but have other Pete towns come up with maps that look like ours, that have like little areas and stuff in the RP?
Um, I, what I see more is like if you have, like, a slope on the coast, and it's a small slope, usually it'll be like a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five feet in and it'll like run for a long distance over several properties. This, um, what, what you showed there, where you've got these little, like, the actual shoreline does, but once you take away everything that we've talked about taking away, what we're left with is these little things. I think that that will not be a problem to resolve as far as, as long as you've got, um, the cutting standards, slope standard, or the point system and all of that, and, because at that point, there's really, because everything outside of there is gonna be shoreline, just your shoreline zone. So having that little sliver of seventy-five feet for twenty-five feet just doesn't make any sense. You can't build there, you've got a point system, they're not gonna be clear cutting it, I don't see that as a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm.
I think some of the issue is, is the data, I think previously when we were, at least the last round of shoreline zoning maps that I did twenty years ago, were being done by using ten-foot contours from USGS maps. So people were guesstimating twenty-foot slopes and how much contiguous, contiguousness there was of those. LiDAR data gives us a whole nother.
Yeah.
Round of, of, of detail that we didn't have before. So one, I suspect that all the towns that I'm doing now, I'm doing the same thing for, so they're gonna get more of these thinner areas because we can identify where the twenty percent contiguous slopes are now that we couldn't identify before. They have much more detail than we could before. So that's gonna, that is gonna start showing up in places, um, and I'm doing it for at least five towns right now.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Or have they asked for similar things that we asked for? Oh.
Yes, but they're not as complicated.
And when was, have they, have for those towns, has it been a while since they've done their map, or is this like something they, yeah, kinda like us, it's been a while?
Well, I think, you know, at some point, you had said that there was another way of looking at the five hundred and one hundred that sort of focused on lots as well, another definition.
Well, it, it's, it's dwellings. Okay, that, what I had sent before, I'll read it, even though it'll probably just confuse everything. Structure per, uh, we have, which have fewer than one principal structure per five hundred feet of shoreline or frontage, or areas that extend more than one thousand feet.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, yeah, so what I, what I'm coming with today is, what, if there are two structures, principal structures, within five hundred feet, the area can stay LR. So you look at the structures and if there's structures.
Why don't you say that again, so I can write that one down?
Two principal structures.
Are two principal structures.
Within five hundred feet of each other.
Five hundred feet.
It would be considered developed.
Other.
Currently developed.
And how does that extend?
That's right, that's my question.
Either side of those two structures.
Okay, let's say we've got the two structures, okay? And that's it? Those two lots are out of RP.
The lot boundary?
Yeah, we, you have to go by the lot boundary.
The lot boundaries of the structure.
Yes. Would become, because that's how you have to do your map.
Good example.
Otherwise, you could probably come up with a different rule, but I think using lot lines is a lot cleaner, but it might be tough on some of these examples that, on, I forget the name of the island where you've got five acre, uh, lots that, that are gonna be subdividable in, um, a few years, there's generally speaking, not that much land, shoreline available in, in southern Maine, this is gonna be huge.
But if we don't go by the lot lines, what, what we saw happening is, is just a creep down.
Exactly.
And because you build one house and it's okay, and then the next house gets built because it's within five hundred feet of the first house. And, and so that, the continual RP mapping is we, the next time.
If, if you've got, okay, so you, let's start from the very beginning, you've got, you've got this lot, this is a built, this is a built lot.
Yeah.
And it is or isn't an RP?
It's, it's not right now.
It's not right now, okay, and then somebody builds next door?
Yeah.
On this lot.
Right.
So what's changing? It, it's just shoreline right now.
Right, neither of them are.
And they build within five hundred feet here, and then somebody.
But it's continually eating up.
Okay, so we're starting with, we're starting with, uh, this is an RP, and then somebody comes in and builds on this lot?
Right.
And it's not RP? And so then that you're saying that this would convert to, um, shoreline, that's, that's the, yeah, okay.
And the other thing is.
Which one did you convert to shoreline? I thought one was an RP.
Well, if this was RP, then the one next to it was an RP, then they built something within five hundred feet of this, then this is no longer in, um, limited resident, no, in RP.
Right. And the next time we map, we have to take it out.
Right there.
Well, and what's even worse, I think, is that we have the limited, the fifteen hundred square feet limitation in RP, so someone builds one of those.
Then it's developed.
Then it's developed. We have to take that one out.
No, no, that one doesn't come out, that's, that stays, um.
Where does it stay?
Putting the whole, like, currently developed, that would stay, it would be getting developed under the, um, RP standards, it's not changing it.
Even though it's a principal structure?
It's a principal structure, um, and that would, I mean, it's on a, on a lot. But I see what, I, I'm beginning to understand, I struggled with that last time.
Yeah.
I'm beginning to understand, but if it stayed, if it was, oh, RP, and they built a fifteen hundred, special exception, somebody comes in, it's, the question is, is what happens if somebody comes in next door and then all of a sudden, they're within five hundred feet?
And how your neighbor can have that much, your neighbor's building can have that much of an impact on your property.
And that, we have a lot of areas that are built up, like Lowell's Cove, for example, but there are lots, uh, that are next to it, like Dixon Point.
Yeah, I'm thinking we might need.
It just creeps right out, right around it.
Come up with a density, like an existing density, something more than just five hundred feet, maybe that's too simple.
Our, our attorney or.
The intent is, is these highly developed areas, not large, empty lots that, I mean, I, I think we have to, we have to think about that, but you have areas in town where, um, either the lotted development, they're all basically undersized or just right-sized lots, and all of a sudden, you're gonna try and put the RP on them, that's where we're trying to avoid it.
Yeah.
We're not trying to avoid it in these large lots, we're not trying to.
We're trying to avoid it.
Play these games.
Yeah, no. Not here where these lots are big and they go all the way.
Yeah, so I, I think that's something that, yeah, we're gonna have to take a look at.
I mean, that's the other thing about Harpswell that's interesting, is that there's the, the road along the, the middle of the, whatever, whatever peninsula it is, anywhere a lot in the town, and then all the roads, all the lots go like this.
Yeah.
So, so there are a lot, most of the lot is out of the shoreline zone.
When we were working with AGA, she suggested, instead of using your definition of developed, we pick areas in town which are currently developed and just, and use those as an exemption, kind of carve them out. And that was her suggestion, she did not like your definition of developed at all. So that's just, you know, another approach, I guess, that we.
Did she put that in writing?
No.
No, it was at a workshop.
Do you have any, any, well, I've worked with AGA, I, I respect AGA.
Yeah, she was, she's great, but.
She's been doing this a lot longer than me.
Yeah, she just thought, you know, this definition was problematic, and she thought the, the idea was more to, to carve out some areas that are already developed, so you're not making new non-conforming conditions, and then everything else, you know, would, but then we have to decide what areas counts as developed, and, and that seemed like, you know, could be just as political of an issue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that should be a DEP kind of, kind of thing. I didn't, uh, I haven't dealt with this a lot, like I said, it's been the FEMA maps, and this is the first situation where I've seen all of these variables on mine.
Well, you see, we have a problem. No, no, we do, we have a problem because apparently we're already in arrears for complying with this. I wonder for fairness purposes if this could be put in a way we could explain to people and then have an extension for implementing it so that the person who has the one house now is an RP, nobody else is, because the houses were there, does she get to put her house there and go under the current situation without, because we're not giving them any notice, we can't even explain this.
Oh, you have to give legal notice if you're putting somebody's property in.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, this is just a fairness thing, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
What I would really like to see is a memo from whether you folks put it together with Judy, whether Margaret and Judy and Jeff put it together, a memo really summarizing the issues that we have discussed today, the problems and unanswered questions, what DEP is going to be working on specifically, solve with regard to these unanswered questions. And as Courtney just suggested, some kind of official statement that says, given the complexities that Harpswell has, we will extend your deadline for so many months or because we can't go to the town, given, given what the DEP, the unresolved issues that, that we can't answer, it just doesn't make any sense for us to move ahead and spend town money on further mapping and more meetings when we don't really have the answers. It's expensive for the town and we can't do it, it's, it's expensive in terms of our credibility, in terms of the dollar amount, and in terms of the time that people.
Well, Judy, can we do this on a lot line basis? Is that possible for you to do this? No, no, but I mean, you have the, we have the GIS capability of doing it on a lot line. I think what you're gonna find is that if we do it on a lot line basis, in, using the definition Jeff has just given us, that it's going to reduce the number of new properties. Except, and we could then explain it by virtue of the fact that the floodplain mapping is much more precise, and the mapping with respect to the twenty percent slope is much more that we have. And that gives us the justification of that, and whoever, I think we need to see what happened, and I think Judy needs to give, obviously, work with Christie to come up with a budget to do this.
Are you saying only vacant lots that meet the criteria would be, have resource protection zoning?
But I think that if you, if they meet the, if there's two houses within five hundred feet, they're gonna get excluded as developed. I think we keep the developed one because a lot of the area that we have is developed, but it's gonna show up on the big lots, which is what we wanna have. And, and the thin strips don't bother me as much because as long as they can build, you know, upland, that, that's not a problem, it shouldn't be, it's not a, doesn't affect their value.
It'll be, it'll be a problem for, for Tim, I mean, because somebody's gonna go in there and cut, and the neighbor's gonna say, "Well, that's RP."
Yeah.
So I, I think those, that's, that's a simple, I, I don't see that as being.
I don't see it as.
Problem, I, I think we can get rid of those. Um, to quite honest with you, I think that the way DEP is approaching this is, uh, is pretty broad, I mean, if we just start looking at areas that, you know, you'd have identified as, you know, there's a lot of houses there, I don't know how many ten per acre, let's say, just, it's a really, just only apply this to dense areas, that whole island's gonna be RP.
Right, totally.
This is a good deal, um, but we can, we can look, as, you know, we're not making deals, but, you know, we, we can.
We wanna do the right thing, Jeff, we're just looking for the.
As you zoom out, you can pretty much see where the density is.
Yeah.
But then you come over here and that's where it gets different, the neck is the worst, by the way, but there are sections of the waters that have the same thing, but it, it sort of pops out to you what's, where the houses are.
I mean, what's in the town's comprehensive plan? I mean, does the town want that island developed? I mean, what, what's your plan, what's your big, what's your big plan here?
We're right in the middle of adopting a new comprehensive plan.
Yeah, because some municipalities want that development, they want their coast development.
We're looking at putting houses on eight thousand square feet, but, but, let's, let's not go there.
Sorry, but I'm just saying, you have to also kinda bring in.
There weren't a, um.
The future.
There weren't significant, I mean, our last comprehensive plan was two thousand and five.
Yes.
There, we didn't, the people that were doing the comprehensive plan left, pretty much left the shoreline zone the way it is, and we were focusing our efforts on inland zone, they have two, two buildable real zones, zoning restrictions.
So what's, what's happening with the shoreline zone this time around?
Not much, minor changes.
Yeah, not much.
So you're basically retaining.
The same districts.
The, the goals to protect shoreline are definitely still there, in fact, yeah, I'm not even gonna bring it up.
Yeah, listen to me.
I, I think that the environmental protection goals are still there for sure, definitely still there, the main question that, that we'll have to deal with as a town, there's a lot of area that's in commercial fishing that got put there that needs to be really taken a new look at and confirmed or just tweaked a little bit, Sam Alexander.
Tondro's Point is my favorite.
Pardon me?
Tondro's Point, it's been zoned commercial fishing since we adopted shoreline zoning, and there's not one ounce of commercial fishing on that whole peninsula.
We could have had almost all, you know, all the commercial fishing areas are all ready.
But my goal is to get this policy figured out.
Yes.
So that we can then go and look at the existing zoning of the rest of the lots in town, and then we can apply this resource protection policy as, as needed. You know, if we take Tondro's Point out, for example, Tondro's Point out of commercial fishing, will any of it end up in RP? But first, we need to figure out what our RP looks like. That's, that's what I think.
Let me, let me ask you another question from policies, Dan. Why the exclusion for developed? What's the policy behind that? If you put the tests of, uh, the floodplain and the twenty percent slope and just apply it to every property and say, "That's an RP, you got an existing house." property and say, that's in RP, you got an existing house, it's grandfathered, but nobody's gonna tear it down anymore. Except to build a 1,500 square foot house, which they aren't gonna do.
Well, if it's grandfathered, you would have that footprint. I mean, it, it, you could build, you could replace it. Um, I think, you know, it's, it's a bit of, you're trying to address the fairness question that's brought up. It's like, all of a sudden, you know, it's RP, they've been living there for, since forever, and they can't cut any more trees, 'cause you can only cut hazards, basically. So, that's usually a problem. Vegetated, cleared vegetated. You maintain existing, but...
You can continue to do what you've been doing.
Not necessarily. If, if, you can maintain existing cleared openings, uh, but you can't go down and cut saplings anymore, or, you know, just maintain five saplings. I mean, it changes what you can do, it changes, um, if you want a garage, maybe, you know, the, the cleared opening part of it changes, the, the cutting standards change, the, um, the, uh, uh, non-vegetated surfaces change. I mean, you may not see these as huge changes, but some people do. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm, I've, I've been on properties with having these discussions. So I, I get both sides of it.
Yeah, I do, too. I think that the goal is really to protect the common good. That's really, that's really what the goal is. And, and to do that while allowing maximum flexibility is what you have to do, and it's a complete balancing act.
Yeah, I think the biggest question for me today so far is, is the, you know, the big lots. What are we gonna do at the big lots? What is, DEP's policy really doesn't address that well. It doesn't address the, um, yeah. I mean, they're getting a, you know, a lot out of RP because they have a house on a five-acre lot that has two shore frontages.
So, I think for the record, um, I would ask that, that we have a, a memo that summarizes this meeting. So it's on the record, what we've talked about, what the questions were that remain unresolved, what the questions were that have been resolved, and where we go from here. I real, I would like to see that for the public.
I just don't know where we go from here.
I was about to ask that. That's the question that I came in with.
Well, I, I think it's the balls in DEP's court. I've got to come back with, you know, if you can send me a couple examples of the big, big lots, um, and I've got to come back with an answer on, you know, how we're approaching that, and, um, see also if there's a better way to get at the density that we all seem to agree is what we're really after. Again, recognizing that that first island may become all RP if we adopt something where you have posted size lots as the density standard.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and the municipality could do that all on their own, but it'd probably be better if it came from DEP.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, then they're gonna say, oh, you just made it RP. I can't build, or I have to do restrictions, or I have to do this or that. Well, you just ruined my value of my lot. How do we do that with the assessment? You just took a $100,000 lot, and now I can't build on it, so now it's worth $25,000. There goes our tax base.
Well, I can't build a big house. I can build a 15...
You can't build that 8,000 square foot one on Tote Road.
I think you'll see, I think you'll see when you look at the map, though, even though there are big, a lot of big lots in Harpswell, the shoreline has already been taken and built on.
Well, I'm worried about the lady that brought up, everybody's developed on each side of it. She's in the center, now she's RP. Well, what did you just do, what did we just do to her value?
Right.
I'd like to see that one, you know, the details of it. You know, if you can send me the island one, maybe that one, and then there was that other large area.
It was this one on Oak Island.
That I can...
The guy on the pole island, one at the end who brought that up.
Yeah.
What did you just do to my value?
Yeah, no, that's, those are all good, good questions, and that's why some municipalities are, are, you know...
But she can still build on that.
...rid of RP. Because they want maximum value of their land, so I mean, I understand that. Yeah.
Okay.
Because if, if any of the science is correct, and we overdeveloped the shoreline zone, the municipality stands a chance of losing the property value, assessed value as well, because, um, yeah, the water quality isn't there, the fisheries aren't there, what, you know, people enjoyed about Maine isn't there anymore.
That, that is exactly the point. And, and it's very hard to communicate that to the individual property owner, but that's exactly the point. And furthermore, with regard to how much it costs the town, if we overdevelop our, our shoreline, and there's a catastrophe, the town is not gonna happen, is, is going to be involved in rescue, fire and rescue, it's gonna be involved in rebuilding roads. I mean, we were just at a site visit where there's a private road to a lot that, it's on Gunpoint Road, and if, if there's a huge storm surge, actually, the, the folks that were, see if I'm wrong, but the folks that wanted to develop the lot had to essentially rebuild part of the road.
Yep.
Because after the last rainfall, it was impassable for construction. And thank God, the town doesn't own these roads, and the town, they're not public roads, because if they were, we would, our, our public works budget would be triple what it is. And so, this is what we are trying to look at. This is what we're trying to, um, to prevent. And it's hard to convince the private property owner that, that their loss is actually benefits more people than them, but that's really where we are. And, and, you know, you're on the front lines, and God love you, because it's tough.
Yeah, I mean, the, the property owner wants to maximize their value, maximize their use. That's why we have land use restrictions, because the maximum always the best overall use. Um, kind of deal.
Excuse me, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, Mary Ann, Mary Ann has a question.
This is, Mary Ann Nave, um, this is a conundrum. I mean, I'm sitting here listening to all the issues, and I sit on the other sides thinking of, what can we do to keep the area as healthy as possible and the resources as healthy as possible? One question I have when we're talking about all these islands, I know a number of the islands have conservation easements on them. Has that layer been put on this when we're looking at them? Okay.
I mean, other than...
Why is that, why...
I'm only thinking they're not going to be developed anyhow.
Why would that, um, what we would do with that information then, make a special case of not zoning it in a certain way, because they already have...
I guess I'm only thinking of, uh, Howard keeps bringing up these islands that we are developing, and how are we going to deal with that?
Those are private restrictions that can be removed, I mean, not easily.
Well, if they're owned by the land trust, yeah, but I'm just...
The land trusts come and go and things like that.
And the land trusts, those are in perpetuity.
They're in perpetuity. I'm just making, trying to bring out if we are making that a really large issue when it's not going to affect that many of the islands.
Okay.
And it's just a question, I don't know.
Apparently, all the islands are RP, except for where they are.
No, but I mean, as the gentleman from Pole Island said, we gotta get this right and do it by a lot basis, so then they can do whatever they want to do when their restrictions are on.
I, I think it's, it's a point, it's a point of information, but I'm not sure that it doesn't complicate things.
I don't know. I was just sitting there thinking of, I know that so many of the islands have, well, the land trust owns a lot of the islands.
And they can deal with what's on the ground.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be good to know if there was some kind of restrictions, because if somebody's saying, oh, I can't build my fourth house, and they couldn't anyway.
Yeah.
And I believe the open space plan talks about the islands being kept as open space as well.
I think the land trust easement information is useful, maybe just blunt criticism. Turns out that half of these included lots are already protected. It removes an argument from the whole...
Yeah. It's, it's a hard discussion, but I also know, when I moved here, there were some ordinances that went into effect from the time I, uh, designed the house and started to build, that I had to make drastic changes to fit into the new ordinance. And I think that happens all the time, whenever we have ordinance changes. It's just the luck of the draw.
Yeah.
Anyhow, this is very interesting.
Okay, so we have a plan to go forward. We're waiting on the DEP, then we will have to, I think Judy and Margaret ought to have a little discussion with Christie, though, the fact that we argue this is gonna get pricey, even just thinking about going to the lots.
Yeah, we were waiting, um, we had discussed coming up with a new contract, but we were waiting to have this meeting to figure out what, what, what do we want our contract to look like? And I still don't really feel like we have an answer. So maybe once we hear back from Jeff, we can have another workshop and then kind of develop a scope of work for Judy.
I think that's a good idea. And that's why...
Yeah? No, your face is saying no.
My face is worrying about making the march...
Oh, yeah.
Because I think this has gone a long, long time since, with the DEP's indulgence of this. We took a long time to get the floodplain stuff done.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't our fault, but yeah, it took a long time.
Yeah. Partly why I would really love to see written summary of this meeting, so that when we do meet next, we'll be exactly, but the issues are still on the table and where we're starting from. Don't, don't begin the next meeting. So if we could just do a, just a summary. So what are we looking at in terms of this time? Do you have any idea?
Gotta keep working on it. I mean, it's, it's April. Plenty of time. I'm glad you've got me involved, and I'll turn it around as, you know, don't let Judy go, the contract expire until she sends me an email to some of these islands, for, an example, Ole Island and these other lots, just, I can put it on a email to my, my boss, and, um, we'll, we'll further refine what we're doing here. I mean, the needs of Harpswell, maybe we have to come up with a different approach, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I mean, if you know areas in town that are like, hey, yeah, for sure, this is densely developed, but those probably have already been taken off.
Totally.
So, yeah, but if you have other ideas of what'll work in Harpswell, certainly, certainly share them, um, what you're looking for as a, as a municipality, um, you know, long-term, short-term, various islands, Ole Island.
Well, Amy, you and Margaret did meet with some of the people that specifically, not. So it would be good, perhaps, if Felt you couldn't satisfy those people, give him those samples to see how DEP would deal with it.
The best example is really Pole Island. I mean, that's the best example.
Oh, was it really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking the more examples we have that we could talk about, like, possible, hypothetical, if you have this and this, then this would happen, that I, I think it would help the public, even if the public doesn't have personal skin in the game, but we get it, like, no, I get it.
Yeah, it's a good point. One of the issues with property owners really helped us. I've seen this before. Other developments drained the, the water flow onto their land, so they got designated resource protection on part of their land because of what other property owners had done to direct water to their property, and that they should be able to not be in resource protection. The other one was inland wetland, which, well, was it 10 acres? Was it 9.9?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and how did that, what Margaret is recommending is, we need to do a little bit more, um, a scientific work in terms of designating that wetland, whether we're looking at whether that's an inland wetland.
So that's, that's a really interesting question. Jeff, we have three freshwater wetlands that are zoned shoreline residential, that are really not supposed to be shoreline residential, but the town has struggled now for 30 years to figure out what we're gonna do with them. And Mary Ann and I have been talking a lot about it, and she's gonna talk to the Conservation Commission, but, um...
Yeah, if you go, I'll show you the best one. This one right here. This is the resource...
Why?
Why?
Why is one one-way one?
Some of it is because of...
I mean, it's been like that since 92 or something.
I mean, it looks, I mean, not being able to see it real up close, it looks like there's a stream connecting the one to the, up the, yeah, there's a stream. So those three aren't connected. So the green one probably has the 10 acres, um, the, the little yellow one to the upper left, is that 10 acres?
What?
Or is it only 10 acres if you connect it?
Yeah.
If, if we wouldn't connect, we likely, based on that mapping, and I would need to look at it more closely, but let's just go with what we have, we wouldn't connect that little wetland at the top, um, to the green wetland through a narrow channel, there's like a 100-foot rule if, if the wetland is less than 100 feet wide for 100 foot long, where they're, they're not continuous.
I'm sorry?
That looks like that, and the one down on the left, um, lower left, doesn't look like it's connected either, from what I can see from the back here. Um, I'm not sure if it's 10 acres in and of itself.
There's the...
And it's not just 10 acres of wetlands. Sometimes you have open water wetlands with fringes of, you know...
Yeah, that's, we really need to...
Basically, when you read the report from the delineation, it was, of course, it was done for Waterfall and Waiting Bird, because that's what it was done for. This is a very low value. It's shrub scrub and forested. And there was this issue that, at that time, they were talking also about the 100-foot floodplain, which seems to be really weird when you look at those old maps, what they showed flood zones. And it was sort of, well, we'll put it there because of this, but it never was very high value.
So the, the, the one that's in RP now is low value?
Well, actually, then what happened is in 2000, when they did the shoreline zoning ordinance changes, these three that are in question now were left out. There was never any really, the discussion always was, even through the Conservation Commission, was, it was political. Well, a lot of it, when you start to look at what the background in it is, yes, it's political, but it was kind of really low value to begin with.
Well, there's, there's two different things there. There's, okay, why are you putting it into RP? Because of the wildlife habitat or because of the 10 acres?
It wasn't, it wasn't either.
Okay. So, I can't help you there. I mean, if it doesn't meet the criteria, it doesn't need to be mapped. I'm assuming that there's some, some criteria present.
My next question was going to be, who, all of you sitting here, because I'm not sure where to go. My sense is that there are resource protection areas in town that might not be because of shoreline zoning ordinances, uh, that we have no way of protecting. We have an open space plan at some point. Who would I go to to find out the way to think about how the town might protect these?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that could be done with shoreline zoning. Uh, chapter 1,013A has, gives the municipalities to add other important wildlife habitat, natural sites of significant scenic or aesthetic value, other areas, and I, I, WWH, or those are all optional things. It's usually based on a comprehensive plan.
That's, that's what I, I mean, that is one thing, I really wanted to talk about this with the company. I don't get to get all excited, but we never had this discussion.
Yeah.
And we should...
Commission to start thinking about, for us to look at these areas in town that are wetland six right now, but that's only one of them, to look at other areas that we might want to protect. Who is the best agency at the state to go through? Is that, beginning with habitat?
I would, yeah, IW, yeah, beginning with habitat, IFW, are going to have the biologists are going to help you. I'm not a biologist.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be in the comp plan. The nice thing about comp plans is if it's in the comp plan, when you're at public meeting, you can be like, well, it's in the comp plan. I mean, some municipalities will just say.
It's in our open space plan.
Yeah, okay, whatever, but some municipalities just say, these, you know, floodplains, steep slopes, and anything else depicted on the map is RP, and don't even really give a reason.
Is that still considered RP, then?
If you're, if you map it, and you say somewhere in your ordinance that it's RP, it's RP. Problem with that is, is a few of those that I've worked with all happened in the 70s, and nobody remembers why they're RP anymore. I really recommend that you somehow identify it for everybody, so that moving on, we know what.
What I'd like to see happen over a period of time is for us to speak with, let's just say, beginning with habitat, is what I'm thinking, to have biologists come in and talk to us about what the considerations, similar to what you did for watershore and waterfall type of information, so that we could then look at these areas and see if they qualify for something that we do want to protect. And then it would go to being an ordinance, and I'm not sure what type of ordinance it is, but I'd be looking to the state or somebody for that.
It could be part of your shoreline, but I would hope that that wouldn't become part of what we're trying to do here. Right now, we need to.
No, 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 I don't want that to be.
RP straightened out as far as minimum requirements, and the contiguous slopes straightened out for minimum requirements.
There are many ways you can do that with zoning. You can do overlay zones, there's lots.
That's what I'm guessing, yeah. And that's something I just have to know more about.
But there has to be a rational nexus between the zoning ordinance and what it, what it is that you're trying to protect.
I think if you look at section 13.1, the first sentence, is the general reason for the RP zone. That gives you a hundred miles worth of regulations if you wanted to put it in the RP zone. It talks about biological, protecting of biological ecosystems, productive habit, I mean, it's very broad. The, the section goes on to say what has to be in here, the minimum requirements, but that's just minimum requirements. We can put whatever we want in the RP, as long as we can justify it to that sentence. But you have to be able to.
It has to be justified.
Yeah, and I think of this as being something that you're not going to just jam it in. I think it has to be something that is discussed, you know, get the biology behind it, get the science behind it, start presenting it to the public, and over a period of time, a year or so, then you move to making it an ordinance.
And you know, the, the comp plan is aspirational. There's plenty of.
I've been told that, yeah.
You know that. I mean, we can justify it based on the comp plan as well.
Well, a lot of comp plans just identify areas in town that are significant or something. That's all you need. And you don't, like I said, you don't need that. I've seen ordinances that just say, and what's showing, any RP showing on the map.
I'm just trying to think of a solid way to move towards that and doing it.
Yeah, no, it sounds like you need more justification than that, but there's a lot of options. You can do it through shoreline zoning, you can do it through other ordinances. I mean, to the extent that, you know, this is causing problems for this remapping, I think you have to look at it from a shoreline perspective. And if it's not supposed to be in shoreline, and you don't have any justification for it being in shoreline, I, I think it should be taken off the map.
I think, yeah, and I'd like, that's what I'd like us to do.
Especially if it's causing problems with everything else.
Yeah.
And, you know, just a quick look at those, you know, the, the criteria would, would be, they might not need.
We keep trying to justify that reason, and it doesn't, but I'm not, I guess what I'm trying to say, it is a reason that does need protection, but we're trying to jam it into a definition that isn't applicable.
It doesn't have to be shoreline either.
Exactly.
We, we lost an historic farm development a couple of years ago. We could have had some kind of designation.
Sure, yeah.
Which we never did, and that could have been an overlay.
Could have been overlay.
And we.
Yeah, well, that's good, we can talk more about the method to do this, but.
Larger, larger discussion. Okay, so we will meet again soon. We are going to look at big lots, DEP, look at how to handle big lots and the density question, and maybe some other issues that will come up. Then we'll get together again.
Yeah. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Margaret, for pulling us together. We've really been.
Margaret, can we get, so the big lots, can we get someone from the land trust, at least tell us where the conservation easement is?
Of course. It is mapped to a certain extent on the, begins with habitat maps. They map all conservation in town, but those are a little bit old, so.
We have, we.
Oh, all right.
Well, maybe, maybe you can put that to us, so that we'll, we'll at least fuss about areas that really can't be built.
Right. Okay.
Pole Island, we'll just, one of these days.
All right, thank you, everybody.